Mr. Patterson, would you do the application, please?
Let's pray. Lord have mercy, Father, we just come to you now. Thank you for the blessings of life, thank you for health, all the other things, Lord, that you give us that we often take for granted, forgive us of our sins. Help us now, Lord, in this meeting. Thank you for the people that are here, they're interested in our county. I pray that you would help us as commissioners, Commissioner Helg, Commissioner Johnson and myself, to ask you to give us wisdom and guidance, Lord, that we would do the things that will be pleasing in your sight and your perfect will. Thank you for all these things, will we ask in Christ's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our first item is unfinished business. Approve the minutes of the October 8th regular Commissioners' Meeting. Commissioners, please let me know when you're ready to move forward with the motion.
I'm ready, Mr. Jefferson.
Okay.
Please, what?
Okay. All right, I'll ask for a motion that we approve the minutes for the October 8th regular meeting.
I like the motion.
Okay. Have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor? Minutes are approved. Public commentary. If you wish to speak, please raise your hand to be recognized and please keep your comments to three minutes. Yes, sir.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Jacqueline Howard and I live on Johnson Road here in Fannin County. Today I am here to define another aspect of 5G that is very dangerous as well that I spoke last time a month ago on dangers of healthcare with 5G. So once 5G is put into place, everyone, whether having a cellphone or not, is bound to the Internet of Things. There is a series of definitions I found online that include as follows for the Internet of Things. Interconnection via the Internet of computing devices embedded in everyday objects, enabling them to send and receive data. To conduct information exchange and communications in order to achieve smart recognitions, positioning, tracing, monitoring and administration. The Internet of Things, or IoT, is a system of interrelated computing devices, mechanical and digital machines, objects, animals or people that are provided with unique identifiers and the ability to transfer data without human-to-human contact or human-to-computer contact. So what does this mean? This is innovation of our privacy and our rights, our security. It is a mine of data of everyone. Every step we take, everything we purchase, everywhere we go, everything that we do. All of our information will be sold to third parties for profit. This means total control of the population by this Internet of Things. Already in February of this year, the USA had at least 21 cities/regions passed ordinances restricting small cell installation. For instance, Portland, Oregon, the state of Louisiana, Northern California, and now many other smaller cities and regions across the states who are questioning, submitting and halting the installation of 5G. Again, this is being done without our consent and this is why I'm coming to you. I do not want this and there are many who are equally concerned and some are here today. I am asking you Commissioners to remove or protect the residents of Fannin County, please.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Thank you Commissioners, please sir, for allowing us to speak to you today. My name is Bill Fleming and I, by coincidence, I live at the same place that Ms. Howard does. And we are related. What I want to talk to you today is about an issue that I spoke before, which is the recycling of glass bottles in our county, which has been terminated through Advanced Disposal. But as I spoke to you last time, I vowed to come back and reiterate the issue because we're coming up on contract time next year, I believe it's in the middle of next year. And we would really like to see glass being recycled again in our county. As it is over in Union County, our neighboring county to the east, it's the same company, Advanced Disposal, but they do have glass recycling. The reason why it's so important is, first of all, it's wasteful to just throw glass away. It is a resource that we can use to generate income as a county. It also puts a hardship on citizens who are paying by the bag for wait when they go into the trash depots there in the county. And, you know, thirdly, basically it puts stress on our landfill. So we'll have to come up with another landfill if we keep throwing away these resources that are just in the ground when they could be working for us. So that's one of the issues I just wanted to raise with you, request that you, in the contract negotiations with Advanced Disposal, you bring this up and hold their feet to the fire, that they need to be recycling this material. The other issue that is of concern to a lot of us, particularly those of us who keep bees, is that the bees in our county and our honey production is way down. And this is not peculiar to Fannin County, but all over the country. Bees are in trouble and other pollinators. One of the main culprits in this is Roundup and other herbicides that are being sprayed. Of course, the power companies are probably the biggest purveyors of, the biggest sprayers that we have here, but also the county and the city of Blue Ridge do spray alongside to kill weeds and so forth. So please, please, if we can put an end to that and on the back of your fires, I see we are finally getting enough studies done to show that, you know, Roundup and other defoliants are carcinogenic. They're actually causing human problems, health problems. And there are now lawsuits going on across the country against Roundup and other types of defoliants and stuff that are being used. So if we can stop that and give us our bees a chance, you know, that would be a great, a great advance. And I know that's within the county purview is whether to not to spray or not. So we ask you, please, you know, help us get our bees. Thank you.
Okay, I can tell you right now, we've already stopped our spraying.
Oh, fantastic.
You asked.
Well, thank you so much.
Who would like to be next? Yes, Missy.
My name is Jenny and I live here in Fannin. Couple of things. I want to make you all aware of this and I hope you already are since you're in charge of animal control. That Fannin County Animal Control has a public governmental Facebook page for Fannin County Animal Control. That's where the animals are marketed, photographed, pictured, whatever. We will file for these, if you will, yes, if you will. And it has come to my attention that people are beginning to be blocked from that Facebook page. And as we all know, there's that pesky old First Amendment and with this governmental page, I think you're going down a very slippery slope. So when I realized that, I thought, hmm, I wonder who the admins, the administrators, the people who run the page for the county are. So I put in an open records request. And the answer came back with only one name on it, only one name, a volunteer's name, not one county employee. So in other words, your page, your governmental Fannin County Animal Control Facebook page is being run by a volunteer. So think about that. You've got someone who is a volunteer blocking people on Facebook. You're not going to know who's blocked because you're not going to have access to it because only that admin has access to that list. I asked for the list of those who were blocked and I do know for a fact of one person who is. And they came back and said, no data existed. I'm paraphrasing, don't have it in front of me, but I did get an open records request. I want you all to think about that. That's a very dangerous thing. What did I do that very, when I first realized it, the first thing I did was I contacted the county attorney. And said, you know, this isn't allowed and she should know that as well. And we've gone back and forth and she said that person should be unblocked now, but that person is not unblocked. So I've talked to the ACCG about it and they have recommended that we go to the governor's office and talk to Internal Affairs about it, which is in the process now. But I do think somebody needs to get a handle on animal control in a lot of ways, but this is one that is not going to turn out well for the county if you don't get it under control. And I'm just curious if the Commissioners knew that we don't even have a county employee as an admin on our governmental Fannin County Animal Control page. Not one employee, one volunteer.
Next. Anyone else? Public commentary is closed. Okay, item number three under new business is a variance request from Cooper Properties that was tabled for our last meeting and the reason being we did not have a placard, when I say a placard, a variance placard, like this posted on the property. And the reason for that is to alert neighbors and concerned people in that area that there is a variance request and has the reason on the, the reason and when the hearing will be held. So I know that placard is out there now. And I'll ask, is there anyone in attendance that objects to the variance for Cooper Properties? And this is property at 194 Long Point. Commissioner Patterson, do you have any concerns at this point?
No, I've seen the yellow placard and everything looks in order.
Okay. Commissioner Johnson?
I have none.
Okay. Neither do I and I'll make the motion that we approve this variance for Cooper Properties LLC. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second? All in favor? Variance is approved. Okay, item four, Ms. Gazway, ready to give us the financial report year-to-date through September?
This is just a summary report for the year ending September 2019. And this is just our summaries. Pretty much everybody's in line except for, of course, our risk management. The debt is just the courthouse loan, which is, you know, done through the year. So even though it shows 100%, it's not going to go over that by the end of the year. Grants are slightly over, but that's usually somebody coming in, going out and it zeros out. Just give a little bit of money to chance to look it over.
Robbing, risk management includes health insurance plus?
Plus general liability, yes.
And buy-in.
Yes. And this just is a graphical representation of our actual. And it just shows where your money's spent by category. These are your points of interest for 75% into the budget as of the end of September. Actually, everybody that was over, I believe all of them actually ended up decreasing that overage, which was good. And then, of course, a couple of them have increased, but not over budget. And again, the revenue generated, because everybody likes to hear that for the recreation, as of September was $189,319. And recently I've noticed the basketball has started and they have really have gotten a lot of kids playing basketball this year. As a total of 2% under budget. And this is just a representation of our lost and our SPOLOs collections. The first column is a year-to-date number and then 17, 18 and 19 is just through September. And as you can see, we have really collected quite a bit more than the prior years. Just to show the strength of our tourism and spending habits. Any questions? No questions?
I have no questions. Any questions, Commissioner?
I have none.
None.
Thank you, Ms. Gazway. Item number five, Ms. Johnson, who's going to talk about an application for alcoholic beverage license. Decide her answer.
Yes, sir. I apologize, I wasn't at the last Commissioners' Meeting due to a debt. There is some information on this application that I need to talk with the applicant because I don't think it's correct. I don't know. I just need to clarify before and to give everyone, all applicants the benefit of the full doubt. I would just rather talk to them without the information that I believe needs clarification.
Okay.
So I would request that you table it until such time as I'm able to obtain a clarification and if appropriate, an amended application can be submitted.
Do you have any questions, Commissioner Patterson?
No. Fine.
Anything, Commissioner Johnson, now? Okay, all right. We will table this until you advise further. Item number six, we have some condemnations and we just need to know status-wise where we are with this legally.
Both condemnations have been filed. The one that is out on Ada Street, the hearing date absent the defendant's asking for a trial by jury will be the first Thursday or the third Thursday in December. And as soon as I know for sure, I will let you know. The condemnation as to the property of Mobile, service has to be done in Rybelle, Georgia, which is where the property owner actually lives, even though jurisdiction is here in Fannin County. So as soon as we get that service back, we would be one step closer to establishing a hearing date. And also for a reason announced to me, it initially assigned a judge. So it has to assign a judge before I could set up a hearing. But that would follow along with the same timeframe in December.
Okay. Item number three, maybe location on South Ada. Will that be in Superior Court?
They're both in Superior.
Both in Superior Court, okay.
The reason being primarily that injunctions traditionally are in Superior Court, but since there's a de novo right, a hearing appeal right from magistrate court automatically, it just saves time and money if you go directly to Superior Court.
Do you have any questions on either of these, Commissioner Johnson?
No.
Commissioner Patterson?
I'm good.
On Ada Street, there's three properties. There's one property, there's three properties.
So overall, how many do we have for the board?
We have, we have one, we have four properties, two suits.
Right.
One of the properties is retained, returning, I believe.
Initially, the Mobile, I was told by an attorney that they represented this individual, but since the suit has been filed, I haven't heard anything from that attorney. So I do not know if they had some other counsel or not.
And the one on Ada Street, we've been proceeding very carefully with this. It's a great concern to people in that area. So we just want to make sure we're proceeding properly and not in an overbearing way.
In fact, we, y'all approved it on a Tuesday and on a Thursday. An interested party who lives adjacent to it came in and asked us to sign an affidavit in support of our petition. So that was included in what we filed.
I don't have any further thoughts or questions either. Anything, Commissioner?
No.
Okay. All right, we'll move on. Item number seven, Ms. Crumpacker, you've got some new residents for the county?
Well, helping. Names and ages, all together, ID codes of the court. So earlier this year, we finished a $1.3 million construction project that allowed us to make accommodations for more chimps. There's 59 in residence right now and we're requesting two more transports this year, which would be 24 chimps.
Just curious, you've been here how long now?
A little over two years.
What are you getting, just what kind of support are you getting from the local community? I know you're getting a lot.
How many people in the room have been out to see the chimps so far? Couple. So we have increased our visitation program and this year launched our field trips with the local schools. West Fannin brought their fifth grade students out two weeks ago. Weaver Elementary, fourth grade came out recently. And then early this Thursday and then two weeks after that, the Alpha Program throughout Fannin County Schools is coming out as well. And they're going to be challenged to design a prototype of new chimp-proof enrichment toys. And then they have to pitch their prototypes to us in a charcuting-style debate to see which ones we're going to turn in the chimney.
I saw a video where one of them has his baby. I think, it needs to be careful, it might get charged with child endangerment.
And that's just her plush toy baby, you know, her real.
Okay, all right, that's a toy baby.
Ms. Alley, how many, you say total you have now?
We have 59 currently.
59? Do you want to add 20 to it?
20 more.
21. What's the average age, you know?
I don't know the average age, but the ones in residence range from eight to 35.
Eight to 35.
I think on our list here, we've got 39-year-olds. That would be our oldest.
What's the normal last name?
They can live until their 50s.
50s?
What's the scientific name for chimps? Is it Patterson troglodytes or Pat troglodytes?
Okay.
Do you have any questions, Commissioner Johnson?
I have no questions. I'm glad you got names on them.
I notice she didn't take any of the names that you gave her the last time.
No. They're open to middle names, so we can go there.
Well, your paperwork on the application is certainly in order and you folks seem that things weren't seamless with you as far as dealing with us. And I'll make the motion that we approve the additional 20 chimpanzees that are coming in. I'll make the motion. Do I hear a second?
A second, sir.
Okay. All in favor? They're approved. Thank you, Fannin. Item number eight, Mr. Ground.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We had applied for and received a grant from ACCG for safety, for the fire department. The grant's an amount of $3,000. And what we'd like to purchase with the grant and have a little to it is a washer extractor for turnout gear. Probably reading in the newspaper, you can see on the news, carcinogens for firefighters becoming a big issue. We've been trying to wash our gear with a regular standard household washing machine and it does a fair job, but it doesn't get all the carcinogens out every time. And it's hard to get the turnout gear spun out properly and stuff. There are special chemicals that we're supposed to use to clean it with and we can't use them in the residential type washer. We'd like to purchase a, it's called an extractor and along with the installation of it. The, we got three quotes ranging from $3,959 for the unit up to a higher one of $11,299. Now, obviously, this has to be installed. This is a lot more complicated than just putting a standard household washer in. Has to be bolted to the floor, has to have larger drain lines, larger water lines to supply it all. So the total cost of the lowest quote with installation and shipping and everything is $5,441. We'd like to ask that we could purchase this with $3,000 out of the grant fund that would be reimbursed by the grant. And the other $2,441 would come from the, there is some money left over in the 321 SPOLOs account for the fire station. This was just about to close that out, $2,441.
When would you anticipate getting the washer in?
I asked the person, the lowest quote about what delivery time was. They said probably two to three weeks after purchase order.
Where actually in the fire station would you place it?
We actually have a laundry room out in the bay.
Towards the bank?
Yeah, towards the bank on the far side that we had anticipated purchasing an extractor at some point.
Any questions, Commissioner Patterson?
One, Mr. Green said that what we've got now doesn't extract or doesn't take out all the carcinogens, right?
It does a pretty good job, but we just have to use standard laundry detergent stuff in it. We really need the extractor that will, for one thing, it can, this turnout gear is really heavy, especially when it's wet and it needs to be able to spin it out good and get all the- get all of the, in between, you know, the cycles and stuff.
How do you know that their carcinogens are still in there?
Well, we really don't know for sure, but obviously, you know, anytime we file a structure file, we're getting all types of material all over us, from foam rubber, mattresses, sofas, just carpet, everything that burns contains carcinogens, and it gets all over our gear. And we just, it's kind of a standard thing with fire departments that they use one of these extractors as opposed to a standard-
So our county, other counties around Kilmer Union, they all use extractors?
Yes. Yes. And we feel like we really need one. We've never had a place really where we could put one properly until we got a new station. And we feel like now's the time to try to sit, while we can take advantage of this grant as well.
I have no further questions. Question?
You said the magic word, carcinogens, so I'm just going to say no to that. Hopefully, you can extract all of it.
I hope so. Certainly hope so.
I thought you used your fire hose.
We do rinse off at the same, we try to rinse everything out as we can, but to truly get it out of the garment, you go into a smoke-filled environment, there's got all that stuff.
What was the total amount again, five thousand dollars?
Five-thousand-four-hundred-and-forty-one dollars. And that includes shipping, installation.
Shipping and installation. And you're okay with this? You're going to recommend this one to file?
Yes, it is. It's the lower price than all three, it's the most pricey.
Is there anything we're missing by not having something a little more expensive on this?
The only thing we really would gain by wanting something more expensive would be getting something that would hold more sets of gear at once. This set that we're, this one that we're looking at will hold up to two sets of gear at one time, and that's probably going to be about right for us right now. We can wash several sets a day that way.
Any further questions on this issue, Commissioners? Okay, I'll ask for a motion that we approve the purchase of this equipment, five-thousand-four-hundred-and-forty-one dollars. I'll ask for a motion that we approve that.
Make the motion.
Okay, we've got a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor? You're approved?
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Graham.
Okay, item number nine, memorandum of agreement between Georgia Department of Transportation and Fannin County involving the Schalfer Bridge. This has been an issue, Commissioner Patterson, a pre-day two, we've been working towards this for some time. And basically, where GDOT is at with this, if the schedule holds, they're looking at a begin construction timeframe of around spring of 2021. Would take about a year to construct the new bridge, leave the existing trust bridge up until completion, which is approximately a year, so we're into 2022. And at that time, what GDOT has asked the county to do is to sign this memorandum of agreement where they basically hand off the maintenance and liability of this bridge over to the county. And certainly, at that time, county will need to make a determination. There's no doubt we will stop vehicle traffic, that's the purpose of the new bridge. There'll have to be a determination if we want to keep the bridge open to light pedestrian traffic or completely close it off and just keep it looking attractive. That'll be a decision that we'll, we'll have to make in the future. If we do not agree or sign this memorandum, then the, what will happen is GDOT will demo the bridge, not necessarily with explosives, but will take the bridge down, and this old one-hundred-and-one-year-old bridge, it's part of Fannin County history, will be lost forever. So basically, what we're doing, there's been a lot of input from the public on this, and overwhelmingly, the citizens have said they want us to save this bridge. So that's the path that we have been proceeding on, and certainly, there will be money sometime in the future will have to be spent on this bridge. How much will be determined on what kind of use we have, and certainly, to what extent will be determined by a professional engineering company. Do you have any questions on this one, Commissioner Patterson? Do you need time to look this over?
No, I looked at it, it's fine.
You have any thoughts on this, Commissioner Johnson?
No. It's part of a long line of history in the county. No matter how we look at it, it's going to, it's going to cost money to maintain it, but I think that money is money well spent compared to the alternative, which is not happening anymore. And I can't remember a time somebody did prefer the Schalfer Bridge, Schalfer Bridge, so I don't go up there and not see it there anymore.
So, Mr. Chairman, this is going to stay open, I mean, until?
Till the new bridge is constructed?
Yes.
Yes. And the new bridge design is for two lanes instead of the one lane, which will be a big improvement as far as the traffic flow across through there. And the approximate cost on this latest figures we had had were right in the neighborhood of two million dollars, which GDOT will bear the total cost of that. So we get a new bridge, we get to keep our old bridge, we've got to put a little TLC money into that to keep the old bridge up and save a little bit of Fannin County history. It certainly has some safety benefits in that we're limited, as it is now, to seven tons as far as a maximum vehicular. And I believe even school buses require something, I don't know exactly, but I'm pretty sure it's more than seven tons to cross. It certainly restricts our potential emergency equipment to come out of Station Three or the new Station One, or even across from Eleven. And the fact that we've got a new paved road all the way through there to, from Highway Sixty to Schalfer, certainly opens up the probability of more traffic in that area. So do you have any further thoughts or questions on this, Commissioners?
I'm good for now.
Okay. Well, at this point, I'll ask for a motion that we approve this memorandum of agreement with GDOT and Fannin County to keep the Schalfer Bridge intact. I'll ask for a motion.
Make a motion.
Okay. I'll second it. Well, I think this is a very important step towards retaining some very, very important Fannin County history. So I'm very pleased that we're unanimous on this. Gentlemen, do we need executive session?
I do not, Chairman.
Before we do, is there any way maybe by the next meeting, we can get an update on Manoel Road Bridge? I know we moved that a while ago, that's something we're making. It's quite a hindrance to everyone.
Yes, sir.
We just had to weed through Damascus, Hamby, and Lake Skillet the other day with a hay globe. If we can find out the progress of that bridge.
Yes, sir.
Because I think weight limit is reduced to five?
Yes, sir, we will do that. Okay. All right. I'll ask for a motion for Germa.
Make a motion.
All right, I'll second that. All in favor? Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, folks, for attending.